Good evening, everyone. Notice of this meeting state and date, place, and time has been disseminated as required under the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975. Copies of the agenda are also posted on the City's website and Linden TV for the public. This meeting is now called to order. Mr. Clerk, can you please conduct the prayer and flag salute?
God of the universe, look thou with favor upon these here assembled, and bestow thy guidance upon the members of the governing body in their deliberations. This we ask in thy name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to ask everyone to please remain standing for a moment of silence for Amerino Ruse, an employee of our Division of Public Works who passed away unexpectedly. Please be seated. In the event of an emergency, the proper method of exiting the council chambers is through the three doors in the rear of the room. Occupants should proceed down the staircase, out the front door, and move away from the area of the front steps. Any member of the public wishing to speak during the public comment session at the end of the meeting, please sign in on the white sheets provided at the front of the room with your name and address. Please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate. If you must take a call, please leave the council chambers to do so. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Ormond.
Here.
President.
Caldwell.
President.
Mohammed.
Here.
Rivas.
Present.
Delgado.
Here.
Strano.
Here.
Armstead.
Excused.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hudak.
Here.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Here. Can we have approval of the public session minutes of May 20, 2025, please?
Madam President, I would like to ask for approval to the public minutes of May 20, 2025, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, we'll now move on to ordinances on hearing. See, ordinance 6928, please.
Council President, I'd like to move the ordinance of 6928 to be tabled to a future meeting and make a motion for that and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance 6930, please.
Hold on one second. An ordinance amending Chapter 2-24.1C and 2-14.5 entitled Division of Purchasing. Be it ordained by the council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 2-14.1C and Chapter 2-14.5 entitled Division of Purchasing shall be deleted in its entirety and replaced by, as a new section, as Chapter 2-8.10 entitled Division of Purchasing.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I make a motion that we close the hearing on ordinance 69-30. Adopt it and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance 6931, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement to Chapter 7, Traffic, of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November 23, 1999, and approved November 24, 1999, and has amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7, Traffic, shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows: Chapter 7, Traffic, 7-33, Handicap Parking Regulation, 7-33.1A, Handicap Parking on Street; Delete 503 Rosewood Terrace, One Space; Add 1108 Bowers Street and 3 Berlin Avenue."
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I make a motion that we close the hearing on ordinance 6931. Adopt it and ask for a second, please.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, we'll now move on to the consent agenda items. We have this evening, items number 1 through 6. Okay, these are enacted with one motion and will be no separate discussion on these items. Can we have a motion, please, on consent agenda items number 1 through 6?
I make a motion to move consent agenda items 1 through 6 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, we're going to now move on to governing body reports. Five minutes, please, beginning with Councilwoman Ormond.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to start with the Budget Review and Finance Report. Approval is requested for the following finance actions. The payment of bills totaling $3,083,289.59 have been signed by the mayor, council president, and the finance chairwoman, and a detailed check register and vouchers are on file in the clerk's office. We are in receipt of the investments made by the city treasurer for the month of May at a rate of 4.15%. I move for approval and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, the Division of Transportation and Properties. I hereby submit the monthly financial report from the Division of Transportation and Parking for the month of May 2025. This includes the collection of on- and off-street parking meters, rebel parking lots, rebel parking permits, and merchant parking permits. The Trenton Side Collection, $1,143. New York Side Collection, $900. Railroad Credit Card Transactions, $23,222.85. Railroad Permits, $228. Railroad Mobile Payment, $14,409.85. Zero for online railroad permits. Parking Meter Collections, $11,226.63, and zero for merchant parking. Grand total of $51,130.33 submitted by Frank E. Urban III, the parking meter collections and repair person. Okay, I'm going to be brief with my board report. I just want to just mention that traditional schools will be out in two weeks, and we just stress that you just drive carefully because there are going to be lots of children, you know, playing, riding their bikes. However, there will be school in session. We have an extended school year program that the Linden Board of Education runs that will send over 200 of our special ed children to a summer program to ensure that they do not lose their skills. There will be nine or 10 buses that will be doing door-to-door stops for almost 200 children throughout the summer, and there are going to be other organizations who will be attending school and camps as well. So once again, I just ask that you just drive carefully and be mindful of those buses because they are still carrying children. The water company is also in the process of repairing lawns that were destroyed during the water line and pipe repair, so please be patient. There were a lot that were damaged or destroyed due to the replacement, and they are in the process now of making sure that seed, soil, and straw is placed on so we can start the process of growing grass back. Okay, a couple of key issues I would like to touch base on as the summer is getting here, the noise. We're asking that everyone please keep the noise down to a mild roar. We understand that you're going to have parties and you're going to love your backyards because I surely do, but we just must keep in mind that after 10 o'clock PM, the noise ordinance goes into effect, and we want you to be mindful and respectful of your neighbors. Grass and property maintenance, this is the time of year where we do receive rain, and grass has a tendency to grow out of control, and we have problems with mosquitoes, so please keep your grass cut. We will be driving through, and if we see something that's out of control, we will mention it to the Board of Health and ask you kindly to please keep, to please cut it. But once again, let's keep our neighborhoods beautiful. It's one of the things that attracted me to my neighborhood, it was beautiful. Last but not least, I want to talk about what it means to be inclusive. Last month, our councilperson in the Third Ward talked about how we have a neighborhood that is no longer like the neighborhood of yesteryear, where you walked past your neighbor, you said good morning, the person said good morning back to you. Our children knew each other's names, they played with each other, they didn't care where you worshiped, where you went to church, they didn't care what color your skin was. We played together. We have so many different things in this town that allows you to be inclusive, and we do not exclude anyone, from the Haitian flag raising to Peruvian flag raising, our Latin American festival, our Polish festival, our women's tea, Black History celebration, and a multitude of other things that we do to acknowledge the diversity. We have a pride-raising flag ceremony, so we include everyone, and if you don't feel included, it's because you choose not to be included. Anyone from any ethnicity, any religion can come to this council or the mayor and say, hey, we would like to celebrate this great occasion in our culture, in our religion, you know, whatever, and we are going to be more than glad to let you and bring you right to City Hall, the front of our lawn, and say, let's celebrate, and let's broadcast it across Facebook, the city website, and let everybody know that we embrace one and all. But once again, when you walk down your street and you say hello to a gentleman, and he will walk across the street or not part his lips to say good morning to you, it's not us, it's not the majority of us that don't want to be friendly, but if you want to be included in a community, if you want to be included in the neighborhood, you have to, it's reciprocity. I speak, you speak. My daughter speaks to your daughter, your daughter speaks back to my daughter, and so forth. So let's just remember who we are, what we are. We are Linden, we are Linden Strong, we are a community of diversity, we are a community of love, and we embrace everyone. So I'm asking all, open your arms and embrace back. That includes my report, Council President.
Wow, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Javik?
Yes, Council President. As Chairman of the Fire Committee, the Fire Prevention Bureau collected the following monies, a total of $7,690.20. Regarding the emergency medical service, the amount of $81,390.4 cents for May 2025 have been added to the total deposits for 2025 totaling $447,191.98. Regarding construction code, this department has issued 279 permits and processed 445 certificates and has issued 110 summonses for the month of May 2025. Monthly revenue is as follows: Building CCO permits and additional permit fees, $133,582. Zoning, $2,800. Court settlements for the month, $25,500. The reflective total being $161,882. Regarding our Board of Health, since May 1, the Board of Health has received 208 property complaints, 140 of which are for high grass. The City Council reduced the number of notification days from 10 to 3, and our inspectors now place yellow notice stickers on our doors, on the doors of houses in addition to mailing letters, resulting in faster enforcement and resolution. Notices of violation were posted on doors and mailed for all 140 of these complaints and summonses were issued for 97 of them. As we approach the midyear, the midpoint of the year, the U.S. has recorded 1,168 confirmed measles cases in 33 states. This is four times the number recorded in 2025. At the current rate of increase, it is expected that the U.S. will see the highest number of cases in a single year since 1992. Among these confirmed cases, 95% are among people who are unvaccinated or whose vaccination status is unknown. 2% of cases are among those who received only one of two required doses, and 3% are among those who received both required doses. Also, the new COVID variant, NB181, aka Nimbus, was first detected in the U.S. in late March and is now the second most common variant in the U.S. at 37% of cases. It has been found in 14 states, including New Jersey. It does not appear to be causing increased illnesses or hospitalizations, but it is highly transmittable compared to other variants. Based on previous years, it is anticipated that there will be another summer surge. Symptoms of this variant include severe sore throat, cough, congestion, shortness of breath, fever, chills, headache, body aches, fatigue, and loss of smell and taste. Good evening, everybody. As mentioned in the Board of Health report, the amount of homes in the Second Ward that are now maintaining, that are not maintaining their properties, cutting grass, et cetera, is beyond ridiculousness. Yes, we have a lot of rain, but there's a, there are quality of life issues here that affect all our neighborhoods. If the city has to bring in professionals to clean up your property, it's going to cost you, so please do the right thing. Please note also, our Senior Home Improvement Grant Program income limits has changed. Eligible homeowners may receive a grant up to $10,000 for home repairs. Linden homeowners who are 60 years of age or older and whose income does not exceed 80% of the median area income qualify for this program. You can reach out to myself or call Development Direction LLC at 732-507-2004 for any and all other information. Also, please note that the hours of availability to use the Lexington Dog Park are 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM daily. I ask that you please respect this being that it's in a surrounded area, residential area, and we need to help our neighbors also. So I can be reached at 908-494-4608 or email me at bjavik@linden-newjersey.gov. On Facebook, Second Ward Councilman Barry Javik. And as always, additional information can be found on the City of Linden website. Council President, end of report.
Thank you, Councilman Javik. Councilwoman Caldwell.
Thank you, Madam President. Hello, Third Ward. First, I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for your continued support during June 10, 2025. Because of you, we are able to move forward together with strength, purpose, and unity. Some may say I'm aggressive, but I call it passion, passion for getting results and fighting for what's right. I'm not a politician, I'm a policymaker. I care deeply about this community and the people in it, and with your help, we will continue to build a better, stronger Third Ward. I lead with integrity, transparency, and dedication. On a more somber note, I want to express my deep sorrow regarding the recent assassination of the late Speaker Melissa Hortman of Minnesota House of Representatives and her husband. Their loss is heartbreaking. As a public, as public servants, we step up to serve with the best intentions regardless of party affiliation. Whether you're a Republican, an independent, a Democrat, we all want what's best for our communities. We must find a common ground and work together. In today's climate, it is unsettling to live in a world where differences in political opinion can lead to violence. We must choose kindness, respect for one another, and learn to work through our disagreements peacefully. Let's never forget that we're neighbors first, and we must take care of each other. As a, as the school year winds down and the summer begins, I urge drivers, please slow down. Our youth will be out and about, riding their bikes, walking, playing, let's keep them safe. I want to give some acknowledgements for Public Works for working so hard, especially Shane Galette, Shamil McLeod, and Savian Wright for their dedication in keeping our city clean and running. A huge thank you to our police and fire department for keeping our neighborhoods safe, to every city employee. Your service does not go unnoticed, we appreciate you. And to all the amazing dads in the Third Ward, happy belated Father's Day. Your role in our families and communities is everything. We're going to have an upcoming community meeting, and I'm going to give everybody from the Third Ward the summer off, but on September 23, Tuesday, at the Columbia Room on the third floor at the Linden Public Library, 31 East Henry Street, I will be having a community meeting beginning at 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. So write that down, and as the months go on, I'll keep on reminding you. And as a closing quote, "In times when democracy feels under attack, let us rise as neighbors, not divided by fear, but united by hope. A strong community doesn't just weather the storm, we become the shelter for one another." Thank you, Third Ward, I see you, I hear you, and I'll always fight for you. Remember, Councilwoman Caldwell always follows up and follows through. I could be reached at 908-531-0676, and my email is mcallwell@linden-newjersey.gov. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Mohammed.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President and citizens of Linden. I first like to give a report from the Law Department, then I would give a report on the Ward. At that meeting, it came to my attention about the number of shoplifting. It's really beyond a local consideration. I'm recommending that the council, that we have a resolution asking the State Assembly to reverse Governor Christie's policy of no bail. There has to be a better way. People have to be detained if you still disrupt, attack people, who need to be incarcerated for a period of whatever the court decides. But this giving people tickets and letting them disappear back into the streets to cause more havoc is not the way of America, is not the way that traditionally my people have responded to this. I never justify poverty, can never justify crime, dereliction of duty and responsibility. That's the report that the Law Committee will be meeting on a regular basis to continue to ask and to support the Police Department, particularly the Youth Bureau, and seeing how we can effectuate good citizenship. With respect to the Ward Report, we've had tremendous response from the Department of Public Works, took reference to some of the clog, drained it, they have responded, Johnny on the spot. We're also very happy to see that the streets are being paved and will be repaved after the work by the Elizabeth Town Gas. This is a summer, let us enjoy it. Thank you. God bless you. God bless America, and God bless the City of London. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Rivas?
Thank you, Madam President, citizens of Linden. Over the past few days following the primary election, I have received countless messages of encouragement and support. Your kind words have given me the strength to accept the voice of the board with peaceful and gratitude from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. Although I was not successful in the primary, I remain hopeful that whoever is elected in November will continue to work hard on behalf of our community. I want to let you know that losing an election has not shaken me. On the contrary, it has helped me to better understand the environment around me. This election loss does not compare to the personal heartbreak that I endured just a moment after taking office when I lost my son. But through God, He has given me the strength to embrace the new beginnings and in many ways, change something. Change is something that our city also needs. I want to take this opportunity to extend my deepest gratitude to my family, my wife, my daughter, my friends, some of the council members who stood by me. Thank you. But let me be, let me be clear. This campaign and its outcome do not diminish the deep gratitude my family and I have, I have for Mayor Amster, his wife, and the many party members and friends who stood by me during the darkest moment of my life when I lost my son. There are no words I could ever express how thankful I am going to be for the presence, for your compassion, for your guidance during thy time, for your support. That was not, was only meaningful, but it was unforgettable. But I must also, also speak honestly. While I will always treasure the support I received through thy time of grief, I cannot ignore or forget why I experienced during this election campaign. I was forced to see a side of politics I have hoped never encountered, a side where loyalty can be conditional, a thing where it exists in name more than in action. The campaign revealed something different. It showed me that the team I believe in often existed in name only, and my biggest sin was to speak my mind when I thought, when I thought things deserved to be looked differently. Despite my efforts and my few achievements, I also learned that nothing matters if you're not in social media. But I want to tell you one thing, I'm a man that I respect everybody and I will not encounter in social media battles. Some may think that my political journey ended up with this election, but let me be assure you, it has not. Like many others who have served and moved on from office, I will continue to advocate whatever is right, and I plan to, my last day in office, to share my voice and stay engaged, not only through social media, but in person, directly with the community I love. Politics is not just about power or influence, it is about service, it is about how we as a society make decisions, resolve conflict, and govern ourselves. At its core, it must always be about serving others, not serving ourselves. To my fellow residents, never let anyone silence you, speak up, demand transparency. The citizen belongs to all of us, not just to elected officials or whoever who I believe that controls the city. To everyone who trusted me, supported me, and stood by me, even without knowing my full story, I'd like to say thank you. Many people for that kind of support get paid, but I was blessed to receive it for free. To our city employees, all of you who have earned your positions through merit and hard work, I urge you to keep pushing Linden forward. We must protect our city institutions from favoritism and political manipulation. It is hypoc, it is very hypocrite to criticize authoritarian leadership on a national level when we enable similar behavior in our own communities. Let's not be fooled by appearances, ladies and gentlemen. There is still much more to do in Linden. To the Democratic Party in Linden, I respectfully ask you to open your eyes, recommit on that work of teamwork. There is no eye in team, and the solidarity I once believed, it was absent when it mattered the most. Promises were made and forgotten. History will repeat itself if we don't learn from what these moments are. And while I am going to still be a team player, I must say with transparency, I will not longer fight for the values that all of you may have abandoned or encountered. My trust and loyalty to this group has come to an end today, and some may judge me, others may form their own opinions about me, but I want you to know, I have chosen not to duel in conflict, I have accepted this setback without escalating tensions. It took time to find peace with that, but I now stand firm on my truth. I remain open to anyone who wants to know and hear my story in Linden in these 18 years that I have been here. For those of you who believe in me, this is not the end, this is only the beginning. Thank you. God bless the citizens of Linden.
Thank you, Councilman Rivas. Councilman Delgado.
All right, good evening, Sixth Ward. First and foremost, I want to begin with a big, big shout out to our School Six PTA at School Six for a very successful, fun day on June 2nd. I was expecting my contribution just to be a donation, but I got drafted to take the place of a great LEA member in the Dunk Tank. I'm pretty sure it was the first time ever in my life I was in the Dunk Tank, and I thought it was a one and done deal, but it ended up being the whole fourth grade had to take shots at me, so it was very, very fun. So thank you, School Six, thank you, School Six PTA, thank you to all our employee, school employees. I was blessed to be the LEA president for five years, and it's very nice to see the hard work and dedication of our school employees still going on. So thank you. All right, let's see, where am I now? Just a quick update. Ah, okay, right outside Wheeler Park, there was a crosswalk there, it got ran over last year, got replaced a month ago, got ran over again, and it got replaced, so thank you to our employees for replacing it quickly. We're gonna, there's gonna be more that needs to be done at that crosswalk, though, to make it safer, so I look forward to engaging in that work. There was a tree right outside of Wheeler Park on city property that was very dead, so thank you, DPW, for taking care of that very quickly. On Smith Street, Conrail was there two weeks ago dealing with their property and trying to maintain it. However, based on feedback that I received from residents there, I will be following up with them in order for them to go back there and keep doing a good job. Also, there's a bunch of lots around that area. I did communicate with landscapers that are in charge of those lots, so that should have been handled already, and I'm going to make sure to follow up and make sure that they are handled. Let's see, we had a bunch of potholes. Thank you, DPW, again for addressing those, one on Linden Avenue, two on West Manso. There was a toilet that was abandoned on West Manso, so thank you for picking that up as well. And there was a very strange weed tree thing outside of Meridia, too, that DPW took care of as well. All right, let me see. On Emma Place, as all of you know, I've been in constant communication with the Engineering Department to deal with the One Blue Acre property there that retains a little bit too much water and creates a little bit of a mosquito situation going on there. Rest assured that we're going to get to that, I'm going to stay on that, and I'm not going to stop until we handle that. Wood Lawn Ave, so on Motel Side, I've submitted to the Traffic Committee under Councilwoman Ormond to, one, I requested rumble strips, some digital signs and whatnot, and I know I'm going to be looking forward to engaging in that work to make sure that we kind of deal with the speeding issues on Wood Lawn. And I know the speeding issues are throughout the Ward and throughout the city, but we gotta, we gotta address it. In Jersey City, I don't know if all of you know, there was a tragic, tragic accident where a child was killed by a speeding vehicle, and it really starts with all of us. I know as I'm walking the Ward, twice I've almost been hit by cars running stop signs. No amount of signs, no amount of stop signs, red lights. If we, we need to take it upon ourselves to do a little bit better. Everything I spoke about here, let me see, I want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Yeah, everything I spoke about here wouldn't be possible without our employees, city employees, so thank you, guys, all the department heads, thank you for indulging me on my emails and whatnot. And I'm going to end with a moment of personal privilege. June tends to be Pride Month typically, and in this country, the story of our nation has been one where we may have started with certain groups being excluded and not being included in our family of all. Humans are created equal, but over time, we've been pushing the envelope forward, making sure that all truly means all. We have each other, that's all we got, one another, and we have to respect each other regardless of religion, sexual orientation, gender, and it's going to take time. There are some things we may not understand, but what I can say is that individuals of various backgrounds, of the LGBT community, serve in our military, they serve in our police force, they serve in our fire force, teachings everywhere, maybe on this council itself as well. All of us matter, and we may not all get along, we may disagree at times, we may disagree fiercely, but at the end of the day, if we don't have each other's backs, what do we got? So I'm going to conclude there. Thank you, Madam President, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman. By the way, if you're still interested in doing any more Dunk Tanks, I'm sure some of the street festivals are looking for someone to sit in them, so.
Oh, yeah, I got experience.
You're experienced now. Okay, Councilman Strano?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening to everybody. Tonight, I'm be reading the Personnel Report, and we'll start with the Fire Department. A, approving the appointment of Christian Ousmane, firefighter candidate at the annual salary of $48,465 effective August 4th of 2025, and that's subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. B, approving the appointment of Nicholas Moreno, firefighter candidate, the annual salary of $48,465 effective August 4th of 2025, subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. C is approving the appointment of Nicholas Tome, firefighter candidate at the annual salary of $62,437 effective August 4th, 2025, subject to the successful completion of the city's employment requirements, and that salary is because he's transferred from one department to the Fire Department at the current salary that he's at. D is approving the appointment of Angel On Hall, clerk one, full-time at the annual salary of $37,298, and that's effective July 7, 2025, and that's subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. Two, in the Police Department, is approving the posting for a clerk one, full-time at the annual salary range of $37,298 to $64,807. B is approving the posting for two public safety telecommunications, full-time at the annual salary range of $44,000 to $101,400. C is approving the posting of a computer service technician, full-time at the annual salary range of $42,071 to $72,018. Approving the resignation of Good Stanley of Wesley Cherry, clerk one, effective July 4th of 2025. E is approving the appointment of Sofia Gonzalez, a student intern unpaid not to succeed, exceed 35 hours per week from June 23 of 2025 through August 31 of 2025, and that's subject to the successful completion of city's pre-employment requirements. F is approving the appointment of Leonardo Salomon, student intern unpaid not to exceed 35 hours a week from June 23, 2025 through August 31 of 2025, subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. G is approving the appointment of Courtney Mills, student intern unpaid not to exceed 35 hours a week from June 23, 2025 through August 31 of 2025, and that's subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. And the Recreation Division is approving the summer seasonal list, the files on, the list is on file with the city clerk. Four, in Division of Public Works approving the posting for a computer service technician, full-time at the annual salary range of between $42,071 to $72,018. Division of Municipal Garage approving the change in title for William Martley from senior mechanic to senior mechanic tier two, full-time effective June 18, 2025, at the annual salary rate of $41.27. Six, in the Office of the Construction Code approving the posting for an electrical inspector part-time at the annual range of between $39.37 per hour to $65 per hour, not to exceed 25 hours a week. B is approving the posting for a building inspector part-time at the annual range of $39.37 per hour to $65 per hour, not to exceed 25 hours per week. C is approving the resc, approve the rescinding of the appointment of Mark Anico, building inspector, part-time, and that was retroactive to May 20th of 2025. Seven is Division of Buildings and Grounds approving the increase in hours for Yasuf Ilwale Shehi, laborer, to 40 hours per week, effective June 1, 2025 through August 31st of 2025. No change in the hourly rate. Eight, in the Law Department approving the appointment of Justin Cooper, student intern at the hourly rate of $16,13 per hour, not to exceed 35 hours a week, that's effective June 2, 2025 through August 31st of 2025. And the Division of Personnels approving the FMLA NJFLA leave that are on file in the Division of Personnel. Move for approval, and I ask for a second.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javick?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes, and congratulations.
Strano?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yama Kaitis?
Yes.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Can you please stand?
Stand, please. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Okay, thanks. I'll make this quick as I can. I want to thank all the constituents that continue to show their support during our recent primary election. I appreciate the opportunity to continue working for all of the folks, the good folks in the Seventh Ward and the rest of the City of Linden, and the city employees that have been so complimentary to the efforts that we're trying to make city a better place to live all the time. And we'll pick, I want to pick up on what Councilwoman Ormond had said about the Water Company. So the Water Company, we got a schedule from our Engineering Department, shout out to them as well because that information is good to have. I thought that the Water Company was done doing their investigative work, but apparently not. They're still all over the city doing what they call soft digging around the meter pits that are out in front of everybody's house, and this is in order to determine whether or not there's galvanized or lead pipelines feeding the water to the houses. And they did find some, and some of those lines that have been discovered to be lead or galvanized will be replaced. That work actually hasn't started yet, but the work will be commencing in the upcoming weeks. There won't be any charge to the homeowners, this is paid for by the state, and it's mandated by the state, and the homeowners should be aware that this work will be, you know, coordinated with the homeowners, they just won't be, you know, digging up your front lawn without them knowing so that somebody can be home because they have to get into the basements to make the connections inside. And I think that's it for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I just want to take a few moments to update you on what's going on in the Ward. Like Councilmember said, we still have Montana construction out there inspecting and upgrading water lines. Please cooperate with them. I'm also reviewing sidewalks, especially those damaged by city trees, to prioritize repair. If you're not sure whether sidewalk repair is the city's responsibility or yours, please reach out to me, I'm happy to help, help you figure it out. Permit parking, permit parking is being Permit parking is being enforced. If you need help getting a permit, or if you're in doubt, please reach out to me. I'm here to help. And finally, I have several, I've reported several properties for issues like trash and tall grass. If you notice any other property that needs attention, please send my, please send me the address, so we can keep our neighborhood looking its best. I also wanna thank the Board of Health for going out there as quickly as possible and doing what they do best. If you have any questions or concern, or you just wanna talk, please contact me directly. My email is ARodriguez@Linden-NJ.gov, and my phone number is nine zero eight, eight five eight, zero two six nine. I'm always here to help. Thank you for your time, being such an important part of our community. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, Councilwoman Hudak?
Thank you. So, as I'm walking the neighborhood, I am addressing all the concerns and problems in the Tenth Ward, and if you're bringing a problem or a concern to my attention, I'm addressing them. I'm emailing all the departments and executive leadership. So, tickets, summons, and violation notices are being given. Our officers, they're showing up for court, they're testifying. Once the concern enters the judicial process, we no longer have control over the original concern. So, just because you see something still there does not mean it's not being addressed. It's just a process, and it takes a little bit of time. So, I thank everyone for your patience. I'd like to transition now and focus on our freedoms. Memorial Day was a day of remembrance to thank our veterans and their families for their ultimate circus sacrifice that they made on behalf of our nation. And this month, we recognize Flag Day, which is a symbol of our freedom, which brings me to the next holiday, Fourth of July, which symbolizes the birth of the United States as an independent nation, and that's a celebration of our freedom. Three different but distinct days that have only one theme, and that is freedom. But I want everyone to remember that freedom comes at a cost. It is not free. So, if you know of a soldier that is serving, or of a veteran, please thank them and keep them in our prayers, 'cause they're shouting out zero seven, zero three six, as they keep our freedoms intact here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hudak. Okay, for my report this evening, I want to acknowledge several employees that have filed for retirement. At our Board of Health, John Laplaca, he's been with us for many years and served the city well. In our Municipal Court, Wanda Barubi. In Municipal Garage, Ronald Templeton, a supervising mechanic. So, we want to thank you for all your service to the city and wish you the best in your retirement. Okay, from the Linden Library. Okay, um, our Linden Public Library has planned a summer of some amazing activities for children while they are off from school. The summer reading kickoff for children will be held on June twenty-sixth, with the theme for the summer being Color Your World. The day kicks off with the Touch a Truck program from ten AM to twelve noon, with vehicles from our Linden Police and Fire Departments available to children to see and touch. This program is for children ages three to twelve years old. The Color Your World cake decorating contest, decorating classes will follow that in the afternoon. One class is already fully booked, but there's still availability in the three to four PM class. Registration is required for all these events. The library is also gonna offer a coding course, which will kick off on July first, where youth will learn to create their own websites. This is for youth ten to eighteen years of age, or grades five to twelve, and registration is also required for that one. I received several phone calls regarding the Terrific Toddlers Program, if it will continue through the summer, which it will. It's every Wednesday from ten-thirty AM to eleven-thirty AM. Ms. Ginger does an amazing job reading and doing age-appropriate activities for our youngest residents. It is a great program for parents and grandparents alike to come with their tots. Registration, as I mentioned, is required for these programs at the library. You can call them at nine zero eight, two nine eight, or visiting the website at Linden Library-NJ.gov, where you can view these and many more activities for all ages. From our county government, the City of Linden received information from County Clerk Joamren Joppe regarding property and mortgage fraud, which according to the FBI is the fastest-growing white-collar crime wherein someone illegally uses your property for financial gain. What happens is someone records a fraudulent document in the county land records office, appearing as though they own your home or a property, where someone furtively records a lien against your property or home. The Union County Clerk is offering a free alert service to Union County property owners called Property Fraud Alert, where you can be notified if someone tries to record a fraudulent lien to your property. You can subscribe free of charge at www.properityfraudalert.com, or call the hotline at one eight hundred, seven two eight, three eight, five eight. You could also call the Union County Clerk's Office at nine zero eight, five two seven, four seven, eight seven. And one other note I wanted to make mention was our Recreation Department. When I got, when I first became a Councilwoman, we didn't have a dance program in our Recreation Department. It's something we were pushing for, for many years, and I'm happy to success, to say we have a very successful program going on down at our Rec Department. This past Saturday, June fourteenth, the Recreation Department held a recital for the dance program under the direction of Coach Shavanda Colvin. The Auditorium LHS was filled with community parents, administrators, and elected officials. The dance team has competed in the regional competition and achieved first place, high gold, and top overall. This award-winning team is now getting to compete at Nationals. We want to wish them all success. If you're looking for ways to keep your child active, you can call the Linden Recreation Department. They can learn how to dance, not just competitively, and ask for Coach Shavanda Colvin, nine oh eight, four seven four, eight six hundred. Or our, with our Recreation Department, our day camps and our playground programs will also be opening. So, more information can be obtained on that, on the city website, or call on the four seven four, eight six hundred number. Okay, Mayor Armstead, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, thank you, Council President. It'll be real brief. Later on this evening, you're going to read a Resolution twenty twenty-five dash three eleven. It's basically saying the city is adopting what we call a fair share plan. Now, the state has mandated that we have a certain number of affordable housing units in town, and while the plan may appear to be, the resolution may appear to be vague, the plan is very detailed, and if anybody would like to see it, we'll have a copy of the resolution available to you. But more importantly, is the city has begun collecting what we call non-residential development fees, and that will allow us to, that means any big project that's being built, that's non-residential, will, that will provide us money to help us achieve our goal of producing affordable housing. So, I, I'm very comfortable in saying that we will have affordable housing in Linden, and it'll probably be unlike any other affordable housing. We're not just gonna put structures up, we're gonna try to do it in a very detailed and systematic way, and that our affordable housing won't be just stackable housing, it'll be housing that's spread throughout the city. So, we'll have affordable housing in one and two-family units, as well as some maybe apartment buildings, but, but not hundreds of people living on top of each other. We want to maintain the, the integrity of the town, maintain the, the, maintain the look of the town without, you know, becoming too urban, with the house, with people stacked on top of each other. So, that's all I have to report on this evening, just want, want, want to let everybody know that we are moving in the right direction.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, just a housekeeping note before we move on to resolutions. We have some new faces here this evening. If you'd like to speak during our public comment portion of the meeting, please sign in on the white sheets provided in front of the room here. Okay, we'll move on to resolutions this evening. We have Resolutions twenty twenty-five, two eighty-four, through twenty twenty-five, three thirteen. Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I'd like to move for approval of Resolutions twenty twenty-five, two eighty-four, through twenty twenty-five, three thirteen. And there is a correction on Resolution number three thirteen. Be noted that it's supposed to read from fif- uh, increase the amount from fifteen thousand to twenty thousand, and that's on Resolution twenty twenty-five, three thirteen. I ask for a second.
Second. Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes, no abstaining on three eleven, and no on three thirteen.
Delgado?
Yes to all, no on three eleven.
Strano?
Uh, yes to all, abstain on three thirteen.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes on all, no on twenty twenty-five dash three eleven.
Mrs. Yama Kaitis?
Yes. Okay, well, now, we do not have any ordinances on first reading this evening. Okay, we'll move on to comments from members of the public in attendance on city business only. No personal, political, derogatory comments, not to exceed three minutes. Okay, um, start with Ed Kaminsky.
Good evening, Ed Kaminsky, Maple Avenue. So, just some quick comments. First of all, just in case there was any ambiguity, 'cause I've made, obviously, well, over the last many years, made comments, but especially recently, on the day, as some comments were made where it might appear that I was criticizing the police and/or the Fire Department, let me tell you something, that that is far, if there was any idea that was the case, farthest from the truth. We have some of the finest folks, and I know, when I work from home, I hear those sirens going off all day. I know they work hard. I happen to know, know those two gentlemen up there. I went to school with them, have all the faith in the world, and they're great people. So, just wanted to clarify that in case any clarif- clarification needed to be made. So, I don't know. I don't even know where to begin with this next one. It's just more of the Keystone Cops, Linden stuff, you know, hearing about the sanctuary city designation. I brought this up, actually, probably about several, several years ago, I brought it up up here, because I was seeing things, we weren't doing things, strange people coming in in the middle of the night, and now it's, I guess, kind of official. We've made the list. So, that makes a lot of sense why a lot of the things that we're seeing going on here, I think, at least in large portion, are happening. And again, if anyone should think that I'm somehow against immigrants, I'm gonna shut you down there right now. My mom was not born in this country, and I have immigrants in my family. So, let's, let's stop that silliness as well, too, in case it was gonna go there. Um, I don't know. I guess what Ms. Ormond said also kind of hit a chord, 'cause I couldn't agree more with you, and I think we both come in from the same spot, that we really, I know I bleed black and orange, but appreciate this town, and it is different. I don't know if the diversity is the answer, 'cause quite frankly, as this diverse, quote-unquote diversity, whatever that means to any individual, is it skin? Is it color? Is it religion? Is it, is it diversity of thought? Diversity of families running the place? I mean, I don't know. Well, but whatever it is, I've seen this whole thing be pushed over the last half-decade or so, and it's obviously not working. It's obviously not working, and it's not that I'm against, again, people of all backgrounds being involved. You should be. The impetus is on you, but to do some kind of forced stuff, it's just not working, it's putting people further in the corners, and we've seen that. I mean, just open your eyes. So, what's the solution in this town? It's a long answer. I don't have all that time, but I think, I know, we'll get there when we stop talking about diversity, and we just see people, and begin seeing people again as human beings. So, folks, have a wonderful summer, wonderful Fourth of July, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kaminsky. Okay, John Kazar?
John Kazar, twenty-three West Mansell Avenue. Mr. Mayor, I can't believe you said what you said with a straight face, man, about the, uh, keeping the character of the city. Mr. Rivas, thank you, that was an amazing speech. If you wanna stand up, let, let everyone see the knife in your back. Maybe the, maybe the mayor will come and pull it out. I handed in my petition to run again for Sixth Ward Councilman. The saddest part, it went well. The saddest part of it all was a few people afraid to sign my petition because fear of retaliation. I can't believe that people are scared of this guy. To me, he's the same dude that used to slide through the Driftwood Inn one in the morning, trying to get free chicken wings, talking about, "I'm a councilman," and then leaving without tipping. You actually owe me five dollars, Mr. Mayor. He left one time, I was so disgusted that he left without tipping the bartender, I put five dollars on the bar for him. Mr. Eloy Delgado, very nice guy. I picked him up recently. We took a drive around the Sixth Ward, we spoke for an hour. It was really nice. I gave him my history of the ward, I talked about some issues, told him about, you know, my family on West Mansell, my grandparents on Southwood, my aunt and uncle before I was ever thought of on Cedar. Two guys with polar opposites, on polar opposite sides of the political spectrum, and he finished my sentence, and I really liked that. He said, "But when it comes to community?" And I said, "Yeah, when it comes to community, none of that matters." So, I really, I think I went about that in a nice, a nice way. We parked, and we just talked for another half hour, and to the point where we both said, "We gotta, we gotta go, 'cause we're both talkers." Eloy knows I'm not running against him. I was gonna run no matter who the mayor selected for the position. I'm running for the people. I'm running against the fraud, waste, and abuse of the Armstead administration. I'm running against the corruption. I'm running against the nepotism, the cronyism. I'm running against the bloated salaries, the do-nothing positions. I'm running against the rising taxes with no relief in sight. So, Linden, I'm up here all year long, talking about the fraud, waste, and the abuse of the Armstead administration. So, either I'm gonna do it from right here, or I'm gonna do it from up there. That depends on what the people decide. So, when you go up against the Armstead administration, you gotta think outside the box. I'm gonna show you how much I love this city. I'm gonna show you how much I love my ward. If you do decide I'm worthy enough to sit up there, I'll do it for free. I don't want a salary. If you make me take a salary, I'll donate it back. I'll show you the true meaning of public service. So, who's with me? Who's gonna step up? You love your city? You're gonna do it? You do it with me, Mr. Javik? Ms. Caldwell? You should give every penny back you've ever taken from the city, Mr. Rivas. Anyone? No? Okay, so, that's where I stand. Thank you again, Mr. Delgado. They're gonna make it ugly, they're gonna make, you know, and, and I'm not, I'm not gonna do that. So, good luck, and everyone enjoy your summer.
Okay, Pat Hero, one hundred.
Did you write your address for the record?
Hold on, I'm gonna address that, actually. Pat Hero, one hundred, West Elizabeth Avenue. My first request is that we no longer be required to give our addresses when we speak at the podium. We still should write our addresses on the speaker list that the Council President is presented with before we speak, but our addresses should not be public. Now that the council meetings are being shown in progress on YouTube, and can be seen then and afterwards throughout the world, I believe that this will help maintain the safety of our fellow public speakers, both because bad actors may take advantage of our known absence from our residents, or later, if they take issue with who you are or what opinions you hold. Unfortunately, many have become far less tolerant of certain groups, and often, this intolerance has been accompanied by violence, which is totally unacceptable. We want to encourage public participation in city government affairs, not have concerns about safety when we choose to participate. Now, on another topic, Mike and Tony are two of the custodians of the Linden Public Library. I say they are two of the hardest workers in the state of New Jersey, but they need assistance. They're two men having to deal with a large, large building. I think the library needs to hire two more custodians to assist them. So, thanks for your time. Next month, I'm going to address the, no personal, no political, or no derogatory, because I think that is definitely a violation of the First Amendment, which says that government is established to protect the rights of the people, not try to keep the people from sp-. is established to protect the rights of the people, not try to keep the people from speaking. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hero. Virginia Malik. You pass. All right. Can we have a motion to close the public comment portion of the meeting, please?
Council President, I make a motion to close the public portion, the public comment portion of this meeting, and ask for a second, please.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yeah.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yama Kaitis.
Yes. Okay, well now, move on to the next council meeting will be as follows. Council conference meeting, Monday, July fourteenth, at six PM in the Council Conference Room, City Hall. Council conference meeting prior to the council meeting Tuesday, July fifteenth, at six PM in the Council Conference Room. Council meeting Tuesday, July fifteenth, at seven PM in the Council Chamber, City Hall. These meetings will be held in person. Can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Council President, I make a motion to adjourn, and ask for a second, please.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Hui.
Strano.
Excuse, point of order. We didn't ask for comments from the governing body.
We did the ordinance route.
It's on, it's on.
What do we do?
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yama Kaitis.
Yes. Have a good evening, everyone.[1758.88]